Good evening. Welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of June 28, 2021. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First item on the agenda, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 21, 2021.
Ira? All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Okay, at this time, we're all aware of the tragedy in Winthrop. And our hearts go out to the families of this tragedy, so we'll take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of personal privilege from my friend, Artaguanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past several months, I have been thinking about what my intentions are for reelection in this current campaign. I've been encouraged by so many people throughout the city, encouraged by family members, and encouraged by members of this council, which I'm so proud that you have asked me to join you again. I've taken all of this into consideration. I've served the people of Revere in somewhat or another of a capacity over 40 years. Thirty-four years of those, being as a Ward Three counselor, never being defeated in that endeavor. For that, I'm forever grateful for the past residents of Ward Three and for the current residents of Ward Three. I took the responsibility of doing that with my family in mind, never thinking it was going to be a lifetime adventure, and it certainly is. Thirty-four years is a lifetime, and serving in public eye and being scrutinized at every level, you have to be on your toes, but you also have to be doing something positive for the community and for people to recognize that you are doing something positive for them. And what I've tried to do is be as honest with everybody as I could in making a judgment. In politics, you take sides sometimes, and sometimes it's the hardest thing in the world that you do. You put friend against friend, and then you make a determination, and you let the chips fall where they may. I certainly think that serving in the city government is one of the highest privileges a person could have. We live in very, very trying times today. The past couple of years, we have witnessed some awful things happening in the world. And we, as a community, as members of a small, little town in Revere, have to be part of that because that's what it is. And so I think what we've done in Revere, the city council, and those members that I sat with before, worked hard with the administrations to improve the quality of life. Now, I've served with five different mayors. I remember the first sector car pulling up to my home in 1986, where the seat was put together with a two-by-four in the back, and the officer saying, "This has got to change." I am so proud to tell our citizens tonight, we have state-of-the-art equipment through the efforts of this administration and the past administration leading up to this. This city of Revere is in great shape right now. We're in great shape. We look to other communities that aren't doing as well as we are, so we are privileged here. And we have the opportunity to serve our community by building these units to keep our tax rate stable. We do have high, the prices of our homes are off the charts, but it's because of the proximity to Boston, and we have to keep that in mind. We are a chosen city. We have a beautiful beachfront. We have a lot to be thankful for in this city. We have city services second to none. I mean, in police, fire, and DPW staff. Everybody does a collective job that's so great that it's hard to match in other cities and towns. I take my work here very seriously. I fool around a lot, but I take my job seriously. I don't take myself serious, and I thank the world of my colleagues. I'm so happy and proud to say how many of them urged me to run for reelection. That means an awful lot to me. These are wonderful people I serve with here. I will never, ever forget the warmth they've shown to me and my family. Yes, I thank the people of Ward Three, and yes, I thank the city council. More importantly, I thank my family for allowing me the privilege to serve the city of Revere and also giving me good advice. And everybody knows in this room, they were all part of my committee. They were all, you know, and we did surveys as to how we would do this year, and we think we would do very well. But if the candidate isn't 1,000% behind the effort that his friends are going to do for him, that's not the thing to do. It's not being fair to your friends. So having said this, I'm very sad tonight, and yet I'm sort of happy. I know my family's home at my request because they could not handle me saying what I'm saying. I know what they're doing, each in their own homes, and I ask them not to get together for this purpose, to please share in what we did for the past 40 years and 34 as a Revere city counselor. Share what we've done, and think of all the good things we've had. We've done a lot of nice things. Think, I golfed with four mayors in this city, and they're still my friends, you know. And one of them's here tonight, you know, and they put up with that. So I just want to express to you that the city of Revere is a beautiful place to live. Do the best thing you could for us, but the most important thing I can offer out to each and every one of you is to be kind to one another, you know? It means so much to be kind to one another. After you've heard someone's views, please weigh it out a bit and think, oh geez, you know, they might have the right idea, you know? Because I don't just make a decision here and go home, and it's easy. I get home and I get a lot of critics when I walk in that door, and so there are people that are mine. And you need that support staff. You need that criticism. You need, you know, people to put you in the right. We have one guy here sitting here tonight. There was a little boy who put a sticker up in his bedroom my first campaign, this guy right here, Michael Wells. And you know, it's things like that that you don't forget, and you just can't, you know. I'm not looking at him what I see there. I'm looking at the little kid that I saw in front of my headquarters on Revere Street, and he was there every day, every day faithfully, Michael Wells. Great, and he's doing a great job for our community right now. He's in a great position to help our community. And so I want to thank you all, and now I will officially tell you, I am not a candidate for reelection. I will be active in politics for sure, but not so, you know, my grandchildren have, you know, a lot of people say, "Oh, you're going off with your grandchildren," and I'm there all the time with them anyway. And we went out to dinner Saturday night, and the little ones didn't know about it. My daughter knew about it, and my wife knew about it, but that was it. And, you know, it's hard to separate yourself from something you love so much. And I really love Revere politics, and I really love serving the community. And as recently today, I was given advice to a constituent that they asked me to, you know, of my service. It's, Ward counselors get a lot, a lot of activity, and that's why it's so easy to get reelected because we get the calls daily, you know? We're not the glorified at-large guys, you know? We're the frontline battle, and you know something? It works for your favor, and I certainly, I'll tell you the truth. You guys and my friends, I will never forget you. This is just a rewarding experience that my girlfriend, Ashley, I know can't handle it too well, but, and Joanne. But Ashley, you mean a lot to me. You've done the wonderful things. You recognized when I was the longest-serving city council in Revere's history, and you brought that to my attention, to which I didn't even think anything of it. And you placed my picture so nicely there, and I will never forget that. It means a lot to me to be on that board. Of course, my dear friend Bob Hass, who couldn't wait to join me. And so, again, politics in Revere, sometimes it's rock'em, sock'em, but more often than not, it's a good thing, you know? Just be kind to one another, be polite, you know, and serve our city well, and God bless all of you.
Okay, that makes it a lot tougher to continue this meeting now without getting choked up. I'm losing my ward counselor and a dear friend here, but I'm sure we'll be in touch. Thank you for your service, all the wonderful years. Madam Clerk.
Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee report.
Chairman Visconti.
Oh, we finished a little late this evening, so I'm going to be brief. We have adopted the fiscal year 2022 budget that has been presented. Madam Clerk, can we do the roll call for that?
Approving Budget for the City of Revere Fiscal Year 2022. Whereas pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 32, the mayor submitted a proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 to the city council on June 8, 2021. And whereas the city council held advertised public hearings to consider the proposed budget on June 16 and any other dates as necessary as advertised in the public hearing notice. And whereas, upon motion, the city council accepted the budget as submitted by the mayor. If, I'm sorry, as submitted by the mayor. Now therefore, be it voted by the city council of the city of Revere that the city council of the city of Revere hereby adopts and approves the budget for FY 2022, the sum of $224,978,231, which some shall be appropriated and raised by taxation and other sources as listed in the appropriating order. Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the FY 22 budget has been approved. Calendar item number four, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY 2020 audited financial statement.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for adopting the budget. Rich Viskey, CFO, just a formal letter to the council with regard to the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2020, as well as the audit of all of our federal grants. Both copies of those are submitted to you for your reading pleasure, and if anyone had any particular questions on it, happy to answer them, if not now, in the future. But just wanted to formally give you those bound financial copies, and those financial statements will also be found on the city's website.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number five, communication from the city auditor requesting approval of the fiscal year 2022 revolving funds budget.
Mr. Viskey.
Thank you. Last council meeting, you had adopted the revised revolving funds for the departments, and as those funds have been adopted and ordained, now as part of Mass General Law, this body is required to vote a not-to-exceed amount on expenditure lines for those particular revolving funds which you have before you. So it's basically the same exact document that you voted on last meeting, with just one column opened up with the maximum allowable expense from each particular departmental fund. Now, we can collect more money than is there, but we just can't spend more than what is listed by and approved by the council without us coming before you and asking for additional funds. So happy to answer any questions on those particular amounts if there are any.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman, you're good?
No, we're good.
Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the city council authorize the fiscal year 2022 revolving funds budget in accordance with provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the revolving funds budget has been approved. Calendar item number six, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor request the chief of police to increase patrols at Wonderland Marketplace due to complaints by patrons of, by patrons due to theft and harassment.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. So I've been told by several people, and actually witnessed it twice, there's this one particular gentleman in particular, and then there's several issues regarding theft, one which recently disturbed me. This one particular person had been banned from the state police to be on the beach, and now he's roaming around the neighborhoods and ended up down at Casablanca Bakery and was hurling, from what I was told, anti-Muslim, anti-Arab words, threatening the patrons, was making a scene. This is what one person told me. I heard recently that there was an altercation over at Marshall's and not with this particular person, but with another person. I went into Marshall's the other day to shop, and this gentleman literally walked out, had a big fisher knife in his pocket, and walked out with a bag full of clothing. And one of the people there trying to go after him and stop her because of, A, him having a knife, and B, his size, and more importantly, that her life is more valuable than any clothing that they can sell. I was told by the person that was in charge that day that this is a frequent, you know, occurrence. There used to be a detail down there, and I think they need to put a detail down there. And I think the management for Wonderland Marketplace should be the ones paying for it. There's been people that have complained to me about issues with homeless going into the gym and so forth, and I understand the need of the homeless, and my heart goes out to them, but they're using this as a place to cause a little bit of a problem. And I will speak with you after this, Mac, and hopefully we can come to an agreement handling these people.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the DPW to install slow children signage at appropriate locations on Sagamore Street and Rice Avenue.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both of those locations are areas. There's a playground down on Sagamore Street. There's children constantly during this weather going over to the Rice Avenue Beach area from the, live in that area. And I think that in a way to curtail any of the speeding down there and advise people that there are children in both of those areas, I think this is something that really should happen and should happen right away, within, you know, a week or so. Again, there's nothing but children going on those beaches and those playgrounds. And I saw a car this evening come down from Naponton Street, turn over, take a right onto Sagamore, and that car was definitely speeding in anyone's opinion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel. Any other counselors? Hearing seen none. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the traffic commission to install SOP signs facing both directions on Rice Avenue at the intersections of Delano and Witten Avenues in an effort to reduce speeding.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there's, I know it's not the complete answer, but I think if someone sees a stop sign, they'll stop, it'll slow them down, and get them off of Rice Avenue without speeding excessively too much. And the reason I mentioned it, the traffic commission, because I believe there's something that in the past goes to the traffic commission, but I would hope that this could be waived in this case here with the summer on us. Thank you.
Counselor Sorino.
Mr. President, point of inquiry on these two motions. Are these work orders, like, so I always submit them through 311. I would start putting them in as motions, but I didn't think that was proper order for our rules of order.
You are correct. You are correct, but I'm giving a little leeway.
Yeah, we're, excuse me, Mr. President, we're dealing with
They're on the calendar, so.
Children's lives.
What's that to me?
They got, they got past the calendar, so.
Thank you.
I'm giving some leeway here. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request National Grid to appear before the city council for the purpose of discussing the location of various poles that were installed in the middle of a sidewalk impairing wheelchair and baby carriage access.
Counsel Powers, and this is a more appropriate motion.
I, when you come to public safety of children, I think any motion is appropriate. Rice Avenue, in several locations, and there probably others throughout the city of the ward. There are poles exactly in the middle of a sidewalk, so. So what this happened, what happens with this situation is a woman pushing a stroller, a baby carriage, a handicapped person in a wheelchair, they have to go out on the street now and deal with traffic coming along, and I don't think it's right. And I think National Grid should be up here and be held accountable, not only there, but any other locations where they're blocking a sidewalk. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Powers. Any other councillors? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo that the city council award a certificate of merit to all COVID-19 vaccine ambassadors.
Councillor Rotundo.
Without being verbose, which, as you know, is kind of hard for me sometimes, think, these young men and women have been spearheading the attempt to reach people that are sometimes the unreachable, to get them to get vaccinated and help our community reach the 70% level that Mayor Rego and Board of Health Director Warren Buck has put forward. And this is a monumental task, and at this point, my understanding is we're at 58%, and that is a huge, huge, huge success as far as I'm concerned. And these young men and women went door to door, helping people understand the process and get vaccinated. So I'd like to obviously offer them an award for their meritorious work. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councillor Keith that the mayor requests the traffic commission to install a stop sign on Prospect Avenue going west at the intersection of Homer Street.
Councillor Keith.
Mr. President, and very much like Councillor Serino mentioned, I don't typically put these in front of the council. I know it was a slow week, so I thought it was, there's some appropriate time to talk about some important issues. And the reason I say this is because the number, the three biggest concerns that we get, especially now in the summer, are speeding, parking, and then we're going to be dealing with all the calls for noise complaints, whether it's firework-related or outside gatherings, neighborhood disturbances. And the calls we get, I just, I had a very concerned resident that lives on the street, and quite frankly, he was upset, and he said, "What are we doing?" And, you know, I, he definitely was understanding too. We've added speed readers throughout the city. I've asked for a public safety campaign from the city of Revere and the Revere Police Department. We've added more stop signs. We've added different traffic signals. But ultimately, speeding hasn't necessarily stopped. Park Ave, there's been some issues. I happen to be in a ward with a lot of throughways, cutting through Everett, cutting through to get off of Broadway traffic, so they're cutting off of those side streets. So I just want to make sure the residents know that. We hear your concerns. We're attempting to do everything we can to mitigate the issues. But like everything, it does come down to enforcement, and then sometimes you just, you just can't have a cure or a fix for stupidity and ignorance. And sometimes, sometimes people riding, speeding 40, 50 miles per hour through a densely settled area is just sheer ignorance. And I have children, and I know a lot of my fellow residents have children, and that's our main concern. So like you, Councillor Powers, I just want to bring some light, shed some light on the issues and hope that our residents can be more vigilant and be more respectful of each other, like my good friend Councillor Guanasso mentioned, just be a little kinder with each other. And I hope that we can also up the ante on traffic and speeding enforcement in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Keith. Movements for the traffic commission are not work orders, so that's an appropriate motion. Councillor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I totally agree with Councillor Keith. In fact, unfortunately, there's a big issue with speeding on Fennel Street, and I'm hoping that on a street like Fennel and Park, Proctor, Mountain, that enforcement takes place. I know Councillor Serino deals with it in, what, Six on Washington Ave and down on Malden Street quite a bit, and obviously on Revere Street. So before somebody gets hit and killed, hopefully we can get a little bit more enforcement. I would tell you that even up in the neighborhood you're talking about, Patrick, they're speeding right down to the street to get onto Ridge, to get onto Broadway. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sure, Councillor Keith, I can relate to you, and I agree with you. I've done, I've already done it in my ward, especially on Beach Street by Wallon Ave. Cars were flying down both ways. So I had stop signs put there, now the people from Wallon Towers, Hyman Towers can walk down to Wonderland Plaza. They were flying. I just did it on Kimball Ave, where they were flying, and I had a police officer there with me to say, "Why don't they have a stop sign here?" Said, "Well, you got to talk to Sergeant Janino. He's the guy that puts it in." Nothing against you, Representative, of course. And now I've done it on Standish Road, going to the Garfield School. The people appreciate it, and they work. Some of them take a little time, but they work in the long run, and we have to convince the traffic commission that that's the way to go. So good luck.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the same problem in my ward, too. Winthrop Ave, Crescent Ave, they're all cutways through to Winthrop in Boston, and the speeding is terrible. So I agree with this motion, full-heartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Mr. President, personal, personal inquiry.
Councillor Janino, a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment, number one, to acknowledge that this Sunday, we'll be celebrating the Fourth of July, which is a wonderful holiday that I hope we all enjoy. But I think it's really important to think about something that we don't talk about often, but we need to acknowledge, and that's the week before the Fourth of July. A lot of people like fireworks. They are illegal. But more importantly than that, I don't think we realize the impacts of them. They affect our veterans and people that have served that have PTSD when they hear the explosions and the noise from fireworks, and also our animals. I know my dog does not like fireworks, and it sounds trivial, but it is very stressful to them. And I think that a lot of people don't realize the stress that fireworks cause people that have been through trauma and also our furry friends. So please be respectful and celebrate responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Rotundo.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'll deal with it at a different time. The issue was about, I'll talk to you in person. Thank you.
We'll do it another time. The city council will, there's no further business. The city council will stand adjourned until July 12.